Hello, I'm Nick Moore and I'm going to talk about my observations about social media, not just at work, but the general landscape of where we're at. Mainly talking about Facebook because that is our biggest platform that we interact with people on. That's where people come to us. And yeah, it's just, it's my observations and trends and there might be a few bits in here that might be useful. So yeah, like I just said, the biggest platform, probably about 75% of our contact is Facebook and especially on Messenger. It's huge, it's growing. Twitter's going down and it's not looking like it's going to jump back up anytime soon. I'm sure we've all seen the news on that. Other platforms are around but aren't perhaps as relevant to us as a council. So everyone says, well, all the young people are on TikTok. But that is, it's a very national thing. So if we start doing the same things that we're doing locally, like trying to get someone to sign up for council tax bills online, you know, TikTok's not going to engage many people with that unless we really start getting good at dancing. So yeah, but the other platforms, like Facebook especially, and all this stuff kind of ties in with Instagram, reels, videos and suggested content. Whenever I'm scrolling now, I will see videos and the algorithms that I notice with those. So if I, if I watch a video of a cat, which I will, then I'm going to see so many cats. And then I see someone doing a backflip on a BMX and I'm like, that's pretty cool. I can't do it, not a cat, like a person. Then I'll see loads of that and I won't get much else. But other people see, will see completely different things. So that is always something that we can kind of bear in mind, these weird little algorithms. And everyone's a kind of, all the platforms are trying to copycat each other in a way. And Facebook doesn't want people to go off Facebook. So that's why they're kind of emulating it with the reels, the stories and the suggested content like cats and BMXs. But the traditional posts, like your image and text, they haven't gone away. You can still do good with them. A lot of people do sometimes say organic reach is going down and down. But for us, it hasn't really. And the way, I mean, the main way to keep that kind of level of organic reach up is just to have decent content or things that are important to people and posted at the right time. So I've mentioned council tax bills. You know, you want to post about that on the day that they land on someone's doorstep, not a month before, not two months after. It's all about kind of timing with that. And they do work. I mean, council tax isn't popular and people let us know that that helps in a way because it would get that sweet reach. So yeah, traditional post site emission texts, they're still relevant. And if you look at some other companies, so classic one is Audi, the shop, not the car. They're, you know, they're on it. They know the trends and they post about things that are topical and they don't even have an image sometimes, just a couple of lines of text and it still gets out there. So when people are saying, oh, we need these kind of fancy videos or we need an image for everything, actually, no, if your content is pretty good and relevant, then you're still safe with your traditional posts. And where they certainly thrive, especially from a council perspective, is when those posts are picked up by someone who then posts it into a local group. So groups, there's one group in particular in Leeds called Leeds Place. It's got 130,000 members in that group. We've got about 50,000 followers, but the followers at the moment, I'll talk a bit about it later, your follower count is kind of irrelevant. You just need one person to pick it up and post it to a group. And suddenly you look at your reach and it's gone from 100 to 10,000 like that. So it's groups are your big ones and it's good to be aware of that. And if you are living in the area, join all of them. There's, there's one about cats in Beeston, which I'm going to keep going on about that. I should have put a photo of my cat, but yeah. But my team is actually based within the contact centre at Leeds City Council. So we deal with all the messages that come in and there's lots of them now, loads and loads. But we have a team dedicated and equipped to deal with most of those. We do have to signpost people to other teams occasionally. Most of the time, we want people to go online and self-serve. Everyone's always going to push for that. So we will do that. We've sent someone a link, they're already on Facebook. They can't claim they're not online because they're literally just messaging us. They do sometimes though, genuinely. But yeah, so there's, there's a lot there. So we're looking at a year-on-year comparison. There's not a huge change, but something happened in April to last year, which will always give me nightmares. It was a council tax rebate scheme. So that, if any local authority here has had to deal with it, you know my pain. Most of our team, not all of us, but about 75% used to work in council tax. So we've got access to all the systems, we can help out, we can sort out people's accounts, things like that. It's really handy because that's actually probably about 75% of our contact is about council tax. And if someone messages us, we can deal with it exactly how we would if it was over the phone. We do the same data protection checks and everything. And it's so much easier for the customer, they love us. I'll show you some of the compliments later as well. But yeah, 4,000 council tax inquiries in April last year, just because of that rebate. Thanks a bunch. And of course, there's not a council in the country who actually gave the rebate out in April or even May. You know, most of them go in June, July, August. We did a lot of ours in July, some of them twice by accident, but we got them back. It was in the news. And yeah, but, but we still have people saying we're the worst council in the country. And we're saying, every council is the worst council in the country, apparently. So yeah, there's, most people do tend to kind of message us rather than just leave comments. I mean, comments could also include just tagging their friends in something. So the vast majority of what our inbound contact is, is through Messenger. It's just a one-to-one conversation, which is nice because you don't always want it to be kind of public. In future, Instagram, Messenger and Facebook, there's rumours around that. And of course, the whole meta suite owns WhatsApp as well. They've been thinking about unifying it all into one app, perhaps not Instagram so much, but WhatsApp and Messenger and Facebook. That's one to certainly keep an eye on because it could affect how people interact with us if they're going to start. We don't use WhatsApp really as a customer service channel. I think it would be difficult as well because you don't have a name on WhatsApp. So someone's contacting you, it could be anyone and that'd be tricky. But at least we know who it is if they've messaged us on Facebook. And we also work with our complaints team quite a bit and the rest of the contact centre and the comms team, the legal team. If someone messages us who's a bit naughty and they're a bit rude to us, we can just check this list and say, they're banned from every council building. And so we, we should probably be careful how we talk to this person. But it's handy. Inquiry types, we do have a bit of a seasonal calendar and it's good to know. And we worked very closely with all departments across the council and within the contact centre to kind of work out what we're going to get asked about. But that's really good as well because we can then create posts and the customer service team do kind of write and publish content around things that we know people are going to ask about. And if we already answer their question before they have to ask it, then we're saving a lot of council time, saving office of time for the contact centre certainly. So yeah, the seasonal calendar is pretty much here. So we've got the things that we know are going to be every year, council tax bills, elections, primary school offer days and when to apply, local events. There's always going to be road closures for things. We love a marathon or two in Leeds, there was a really good one recently, triathlon. So yeah, I can share this with anyone if, if they want afterwards and send you an email if it helps. But yeah, it's a good little template to kind of keep you on track and think, I mean, we're in June already. It was January yesterday, I thought, yeah. So you can look at what's coming up. So yeah, I better start thinking about what we're going to do when, we've got about 100,000 students in Leeds and a lot of their tenancies end in June and start again in July. So there's flytipping. A whole area of Leeds is basically, they call it Hyde Park Christmas because it's just lampshades everywhere. So we can start dealing with that. And how do we cope with dealing with these kind of thousands and thousands of messages? And it's, yeah, it is a lot. And a bit like, if everyone's heard of Godwin's Law, which if something bad can happen, it will, a bit like that. If someone can message us about any subject, they will and they do. We've had all sorts. My favourite one, which I always remember, is someone from Leeds in Alabama who was convinced we were twinned and wanted us to send him a rosebush. He asked for a fountain at first and we said no. So I think, I did speak to our international relationship team and I was thinking, can we send them anything? I think we narrowed it down to like a Twix, but we didn't do that. But he was fine with it. He just thought, if you don't ask, you don't get and fair enough. So yeah, it's, it's, it is, how do we cope? Well, we are kind of equipped because we're customer service officers, so it helps. And we're customer service officers who are specially kind of bought into that role through an interview process where you need to be a bit social media savvy as well and a bit like you know about local news. So we always get kind of the right people into that and then just kind of dedicate them to responding on, on social media and stuff. And it is, it is difficult sometimes. You get, not everyone's always pleasant, but genuinely, most people are really nice. It's always, you can get one comment or message that will ruin your day, but then you forget that you've actually replied to 300 other people that day and they've been lovely. So it's, yeah, remembering that is important. And every month I share a report with a bunch of compliments, which I'm going to show you in a bit. And that is kind of a nice little reminder of all the people who said thank you to you in a nice way in that last month. And then you think, oh yeah, I've, I've done all right actually. Yeah, that one angry person, forget them. So yeah. The other side of things, what I observe, engagement, how to get the maximum engagement. Basically, the easy way is, is something that's relevant or perhaps a bit controversial sometimes. We know what's going to cause a conversation and that's when your engagement kind of levels are going to go up. But what I've noticed as well, I'm going to play a little game now, if anyone wants to raise their hand. Local news, instead of posting about, you know, news, they do what I call comment bait and, you know, silly little questions like this round is called in the fridge. So let's have a hands up for yes, bread in the fridge. Exactly. And everyone's, we've got a lot of people shaking their head there. And if you see someone post something like, should bread go in the fridge? You'll have loads of people saying, of course. And then you'll have loads of other people saying, no, 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 no. And it's the same, same goes with ketchup, chocolate, eggs, you know, anything, anything in the fridge will cause an argument. And, and I see it when I'm scrolling past and I just, I feel like I need to leave my opinion on here. No one's going to read it, but that's how they do it. And then because that, how the algorithms work, because someone's left a comment on that organisation, they're going to see the next thing you post, which for us, I mean, we're not going to post about stuff in the fridge. People would go crazy if they saw Leeds City Council doing something like that. But if we then wanted to post about council tax bills, then I mean, we'll get some engagement on that because everyone pays it for fun, as we know. So yeah, that, that's my observations on how to get engagement is do something that people might comment on. There are other, other things, like just a fun event where someone would tag their friend. That, that's a more realistic one for a council. And social bubbles as well. So me and my friends were all kind of very similarly politically minded and things like that. A lot of the things I'll see on my own feed are in my own bubble. But as a council, you're getting all of that together. So anything you've got, elections for example, you could just be saying something simple about voter ID. You'll get every people from every political sphere, they all come in at once and they all argue with each other. So it's, it's very different working kind of from a council perspective than it is on your own personal feed because you've got the bubbles clashing, whereas it's kind of a bit of a more safer space on my own personal feed. There's some compliments, lovely stuff. Because we have this, these are all just from April this year. Because we have a team dedicated, we're using Olo, we can, everything that comes into the inbox, we're quite snappy. Our average response time so far this year is under seven minutes. So people get it quick and they, they love it, as we can see. And yeah, final kind of bits, there's a kind of waffle on. Follower increases, a lot, historically, the metric that people have used for social media success has been how many followers have we got? Particularly, now that is probably a big thing on Twitter, but Twitter's kind of going a bit downhill now. Facebook is almost irrelevant. I mean, it's handy to have over 10,000 because you've got that one person out of the 10,000 who picks it up and posts it to the big group. But if you've got 50,000 followers, they're not going to see all of your posts. We probably get about 15% of our reach kind of based on our followers. But quite often, we'll have posts that get 200,000 reached. And so it's, followers doesn't matter, is a bit of a pointless metric now. What you really want is what content has projected the most, who's, how many people have seen it? And monitor each post like that rather than just saying, we've got an extra 100 followers this month. And yeah, finally, is social media always so toxic? A lot of people say they, they take a break sometimes from social media because it is. But there's certainly, it doesn't always have to be that way. If you want to unfollow your local news things, that can be really helpful. If you just go into, I'm going to mention cats again, there's so, so many groups about cats in funny poses or this cat, one called this cat is assembled incorrectly and this catch just kind of sat like that. And so it can be nice actually, social media, there is some good stuff in there. And if there's some stuff that's getting you down, you, yeah, just get rid of it and don't follow the, the toxic stuff. So yeah, there's, it's not a bad place despite people complaining about it sometimes and saying it's bad for you. And it certainly can. And I'm sure in the wellbeing session later, there'll be a lot on that. But yeah, there's some nice bits. I think, yeah, that's, that's me. Thank you.
That's great. So brilliant. I've got a couple of lots of questions, but we've got questions on the floor, I'm sure. So seven minutes is a response time, that's obviously really impressive. What kind of size team have you got there at the council?
We've got, we've got myself and three customer service officers. Usually there'll be one or two of them on, it's, it's Monday mornings are the big one for us because we've got the backlog of weekend, we kind of don't really check. So it is longer on a Monday morning. But if you get to Thursday afternoon and it's fairly quiet, as soon as something comes in, a reply goes kind of straight away. Obviously, the resolution for whatever this person asks could be longer, but as long as they know you're listening and you've responded, then you can take as long as you like. It can take hours sometimes to go back and forth. But, but they just want to know that they're being heard. And what you'll find a lot of people do, and this is why social media is so convenient, is that you can send a message, put the kettle on, while you wait for a response. You're not sat there on the phone waiting for someone to mysteriously pick up. So yeah, and then if we reply before the kettle's boiled, that's even better.
Right. Yeah.
I've got my, I don't know. I just wondered if you're.
I should have said, we've got to use the mics.
I've got.
Mitch has told me. We must use the mic.
Yeah. Except for the problems, I was like, think of it twice.
How about you, Joe?
I wonder, your increase in digital demand, I did a bit of bank packet maths, I reckon that was about 20% over a year.
Yeah.
Do you know if overall the demand in the contact centre is increasing at the same rate? This is my first question. And my second one is, why do you think the Twitter decline is happening? Do you think that's just a general thing or do you think it's something specific to what you're doing?
I think generally speaking, especially with all the stuff we've done with our website and our online forms and things like that, we, we thought that would really drive down kind of overall contact centre traffic. But in a way, it's made people easier to report flytipping or something like that, you know. So levels are round about the same. We've just made it easier and more convenient for people to, to talk to us and more so now because more people are messaging us. On Twitter, yeah, I think maybe it is a generational thing. It's about 10 years ago, Twitter was kind of fairly big, but Instagram wasn't. And it's, the people who were using Twitter then were kind of your, your people in their early twenties perhaps, you know, you're tech savvy. Now, well, like me, kind of early thirties and the people who are in their twenties now are more Instagram based, the WhatsApp and things like that. That's where people kind of talk to each other, mostly in private conversations though. Twitter is a big open conversation and people don't really kind of want to do that anymore. It's still going to be there because you want to follow your celebrities and you want to be able to talk to them and you want to be able to get a response from a company or a council. So it's, it's still, it has its use, but it's not, it's not something that I personally scroll through daily for hours and hours, but I still do that on Facebook. So yeah.
Questions for Nick.
Hello.
Yes, Nick.
I might flip up the words a bit because I've not quite thought it over. But so you mentioned that part of what almost all the people in your team came from sort of the customer service background.
Yep.
All customer focused. One, I'm, I'm also oversee with the local council. Our social media team are made up of people across the thing. And one of the things that we've probably noticed is, you know, a lot of the time, people can't go and resolve the issue because they don't have access to that team.
Yeah.
I think having all the customer service teams based in the social media area is the right decision.
Yes, it's a good quick answer. It's great. And because of, you see by the compliments that we get, people love it, it's convenient. And but just because we're a customer service team, it doesn't mean we don't talk to the communications and marketing teams and the web teams. I mean, every day, we've got a constant dialogue. I'm chatting to them on Teams and we have regular catch-ups. It's, we're all, we're so connected. But yeah, the root of our team is customer service people and that's why we sit within the contact centre. And we've, I'm sure there have been conversations thinking about whether we should move into a more IT department or communications. But we sit so comfortably there in the contact centre that I don't see any reason to change it and we're quite happy there.
And is it multifaceted, Nick, in terms of that you're doing calls and social or are you just doing social?
No, I know some councils do have that, but for us, we're pretty dedicated. But what we do as well, we have an email inbox for the council, just general inquiries. We've actually picked up responding to those emails. The reason being, we're so used to getting the weird and wonderful of everything, that actually it sits really well in our team because we might know the answer to some random inquiry which we will get every day. So yeah, we're not on the phones at least, yeah.
But that's interesting. We're thinking of bringing emailing to the inbox as one of our developments that's on the roadmap, so.
Watch that space, yeah.
And I know in the past, Nick, you've said that being good on social for customer service has reduced your call volumes and that kind of investment in it in the early days. It's kind of, because there's a cost saving there as well, isn't there?
I think there is a cost saving because it's, to go through a, some discussions over the phone can take a long time and the person, the agent kind of dealing with that is, could be stuck there for 15 minutes. But with social, you've got that kind of passive conversation. Like I say, you can put the kettle on. We reply to one person, we reply to another, we reply to another, we reply to another. Then we go back to the person we sent, once their cup of tea's done. Yeah, so it's, we can deal with four people at once, five people at once. So it's, it's hard to nail down actual numbers of what that cost saving would be. I mean, it's practically impossible and I don't know anyone who's kind of absolutely nailed it, even though we've been trying for years. But we, we certainly know anecdotally that we can deal with large volumes of people at once and so surely that's better than one at once.
You said also.
Sorry, I was just going to jump in. You were saying there, Nick, sorry, I'm jumping in. It's a bit talk show, isn't it? Nick, you were saying about your team and the reactive function. Do you have the proactive function within that team as well? Or does that sit within, like you're saying, does that sit within problems or does that sit within the market routine?
Bit of both. Yeah, so if we do need to be proactive on something, that actually, yeah, it does happen quite a lot. We'll, we'll have someone who will raise something and it might just be that we need a small tweak on the website that will fix the problem. But because we're so hand in hand with the web team, we can get that sorted like that. If there's an event that's happened in the city or someone started a protest, that's happened before, and we can be in touch with the right people. Let the comms team know so we can get like a press response, you know, if BBC ring up, then we've already kind of given them a heads up. Yeah, because we're on the front line, we do have to be quite proactive and have the contacts in place to be able to respond to that.
But if you had like sort of a campaign or like you say with your seasonal planning, you know that something's coming up, would you have a campaigns team or somebody who creates social content for, you know, say over the anti-social behaviour.
Yeah.
Summer or something, do they then feed that information for you to be the mechanism to put that out on social media or is that dealt with in a different team or?
Again, it's a bit of both. We know, let's, elections for example, we know every year ballot papers will be sent out on X date, postal votes will be sent out on a certain date. We've got like a template that we wrote because we know what customers ask us and how we respond over the phone is the kind of tone of voice that we'd want to put on social as well. So we wrote that whole plan and we've used it, almost the same one, a bit different this year with voter ID. When comms team this year sat down, they had a project board meeting, I'm now on the project board because it makes sense. Comms team said, oh, Nick's already written the plan. So yeah, there is a bit of both, I think.
I think lots of councils would like a Nick in there.
I've just like said, you need a Nick.
Thank you.
This might be the chance.
Nick, can I just ask? I've got a big enough mouth, I don't think. Could I just ask, did you sort of, sort of do a bit of a publicity campaign to get people to, to message you as opposed to run on social media? So there's two, two parts to the question. You said that you get a lot of messenger, messenger messages.
Yeah.
Which I think is quite good because it's contained then and it's not kind of like the keyboard warriors. And then the second question is, do your, your team. And then the second question is, do your, do your team, do you have people in your team that monitor social media constantly? Because that's certainly the resource issue that we have, that we can't, we haven't got the designated resource to filter out all of those.
Yeah.
Council, you can appreciate negative comments or random comments.
Certainly.
And how do you deal with that? Because obviously if you block people, then it sometimes antagonises. So.
There's.
Six questions in there.
Yeah, I mean, I could, I could talk about all of that for, for, for ages. We, we do monitor comments and things nine to five office hours. We do have an out of hours team who keep an eye on, on things, but they don't always kind of, they're not always looking for the comments and, and things like that unless it's obviously bad, then they'll just hide it. They're, they're just looking out for emergencies, but we do have an auto-response that says, here's what to do if your house is falling down, you know, which is not message us for starters. But part of that as well and, and that monitoring those comments, we work closely with the comms team and we're looking at the scheduler and what's about to go out. If you're going to do something, so in Leeds, so, and this is kind of across the country, unfortunately not everyone's very nice. So if we're going to post something that we know is going to be contentious, let's say, we did a lot of stuff around George Floyd, we did, we always do every year, a lot of stuff about pride, some people don't like that. So don't post that at six o'clock on Friday night when no one's going to be able to monitor it. Instead, we actually work with the comms team to make sure that we're going to post here at nine AM so that we've got the whole day to nip anything in the bud before it goes out. And we can still post out about at five o'clock on the Friday night, but just do about something that no one cares about.
These talks are great, I hope you said. Can I ask a question? Super quick, we've got about a million.
Yeah. How do you respond, how do you cope with responding to comments on social media if you get so many?
We, comments themselves, we don't really respond. There's a risk there because if you reply to one person and there's a hundred comments, you're going to have to respond to all of them. So if, if someone's got a question that they actually want to ask us, they'll send us a message. If they're leaving a comment, they're not really asking us a question, are they? So it's, it's their own fault in a way sometimes.